So is this in honor of Mary?
I think so.
Okay, well, I think we'll call the meeting to order. Calling to order the August 25th, 2025, meeting of the Lawrence Douglas County Metropolitan Planning Commission. At this point, I will turn it over to Becky Pepper to remind us of the rules for the hybrid format.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. Please silence your cell phones to minimize distraction during the meeting. When the Chair calls for public comment, please approach the podium to indicate you wish to speak. Virtual participants should use the raise hand function to indicate that they wish to speak during the public comment. Once your name is called, please unmute and turn your camera on to provide your comments. Please state your name before speaking. The city reserves the right to turn videos off or mute participants. All comments will be limited to three minutes. The primary format to access and participate in this meeting is in-person at City Hall. Virtual access to video or participate in the meeting cannot be guaranteed. The chat function will not be monitored. If you have any trouble, the meeting can be viewed on the city's YouTube channel and cable channel 25.
And our first order of business tonight will be to approve the minutes from two prior meetings. As you remember, we were having technical issues last month, and so we need to approve the minutes from the June and from the July meetings. So I'll entertain a motion. We can either take them up one at a time or together.
I'll make a motion to approve the June 28th, 25 minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Entertain a second motion.
I move that we approve the minutes from the July 23rd, 2025 meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I have to abstain.
And I think that's just a good reminder of why we do them separately often. We'll move into committee reports, so we'll receive any reports from the committees that have met over the past month. I believe we have a report from the Lawrence Douglas County Metropolitan Planning Organization Policy Board. Is that correct?
That's correct. There was a very short meeting. There were amendments to the... To be...
Tip.
Thank you very much. Stupid tip. And these amendments happen quarterly, and this was one of the quarterly ones, but there were very few changes in terms of what projects were going to be done, but there were a number of language changes directed by federal policy. So it was an interesting meeting.
Language changes on federal policy, so maybe this isn't the right time to click into that, but I'm...
Well, I think that there were changes in some DEI.
I was wondering if that's what it was.
Yeah.
I'll go back and watch the minutes to learn more. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Other questions? Discussion? Okay, then we will move into our communications. It's time to receive any written communications from the public.
All communications that received part of the pack... Sorry. All communications received by the deadline are included as part of your packets.
Receive written communications from staff, planning commissioners, or other commissioners.
None this evening.
Receive written action of any waiver requests or determinations made by the city engineer.
Also none this evening.
And this is a time for disclosures of ex parte communications regarding either of the items that we have on the agenda for this evening. Same none. Declaration of abstinence from anything on the agenda that we have this evening. And so now we'll move into general public comment. This is a time for public comment on any item that is not on our regular agenda. Is there anyone here to make general public comment this evening? If so, please approach the podium. You'll have three minutes for general public comment. Please introduce yourself and state your name for the record or so that we can identify you.
Good evening. My name is Eric Hyde, 66046. I care deep... I hope I'm in the right place. I'm here to talk about planning and development and the department here in the City of Lawrence. And the issue is, I went to the planning and development office because I noticed that there are a lot of yard sign violations, and Lawrence is a content-neutral city with content-neutral codes that people are allowed to intentionally violate. If you just look around the city and the public rights of way, safety designated easement areas, there are a lot of signs in those areas for political candidates and businesses and even people from outside the city that are trying to come in and buy up houses for So I've been trying to get some code enforcement on this, but the issue is, in planning and development, it is intentionally designed to not issue fines to people who intentionally and repeatedly... Intentionally just means repeatedly, basically according to the ordinance. There are no fines. On top of that, there are zero records, according to Director Brian Jimenez. I'm not trying to get Brian Jimenez in trouble. I think that guy has a heart. The only thing is, I think that this... That it's somehow systematically neglected. There's a breach of duty, approximate cause for damage, and all that stuff. People do not realize that these signs are secretly not content-neutral, and that's okay. People can express whatever they want to express for the freedom of speech. However, they must follow the rules. So for instance, I don't... I don't... For signs that are not related to political stuff, I don't report people who have their sign on the other side of the sidewalk against their house, that area. But if it's on the other side... Yeah. Anyway, I talked to a lady in the office downstairs today, and she said they don't even necessarily need a complaint from the public in order to take care of these things. But today, I noticed exactly 20. I only recorded 19. I let the 20th go. And who is the 20th person? I won't say any names, but it's a realtor in town, a well-respected one. So there needs to be some fine enforcement so the city can handle... Can fix some of its budget problems with all that stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, then, we'll turn to our regular agenda items. We have the first item to consider. I believe that Mary Miller will be providing the report for that.
Just hit the green share at the bottom of Zoom, and you'll find your stuff.
Okay. There it is. Thanks. I'm Mary Miller, a city-county planner, and this is a preliminary plat for property in the unincorporated portion of the county. It is located just north of Rock Chalk Park, north of I-70. This property is about 19 acres, and it was the subject of a rezoning recently. A few months ago, this came to you to rezone from Ag 1 to LI, or Light Industrial, and the purpose was to allow for the relocation of a landscape business. It's currently operating under a CUP for equipment storage, which limits their daytime activities. There can't be an all, you know, all-the-time presence at the site. It's just for storage of equipment, picking it up and delivering it, pick it up at the beginning of the day and bring it back in the evening. So this all is intended to accommodate a landscape business that can have customers and employees on the site. It is the eastern 18... Well, actually, it's 19 acres, but one acre is going to be dedicated for right-of-way. It's the eastern portion of this property. The graphic on the right here just shows the proposed plat. It's a one-lot subdivision. Some of the key points: This is within Tier 3 of the Lawrence Urban Growth Area, and it is within the K-10 and Farmer's Turnpike Plan. And a preliminary plat is the first of two steps in the major subdivision process. If this is approved by the planning commission, the next step would be the submittal of a final plat. And if the final plat conforms to the preliminary plat, then it is processed administratively, and it is put on... It'll be put on the county commission's agenda for acceptance of dedications. And the third key point is, there was an access restriction done. There's a little piece in that northwest corner that was divided off. When that was divided off, an access restriction agreement was entered into between the county and the property owner, and that way they were able to divide that small parcel off while maintaining their access management standards. And so the parent parcel, that 40 acres that we saw on the previous slide, only has one access point. It can also have farm access, of course, but the one commercial access point or non-agricultural access point will be used by this plat. The remaining portion of the 40 acres will be kept in agricultural use, and they will use the field access. With this plat, there's also a variance request. In the subregs, there's a requirement in the public improvement to have a master street tree plan, and you'll notice in the code citations, they're a little different. The subdivision regulations are in Chapter 11 of the county code, so when you have county items, we refer to the county code. It's the same as a city, except city is in Chapter 20. And this requirement says that all subdivisions within the City of Lawrence or Lawrence's Urban Growth Area shall be required to provide a master street tree plan that meets the standards of that subsection. And so that goes on to tell the spacing of the street trees, the species, and when they should be planted. The variance criteria we look at in the subregs, there's three. One is that the strict application of the regulations would result in an unnecessary hardship on the subdivider. And number two, the proposed variance must be in harmony with the intended purpose of the regulations. And then number three, the public health, safety, and welfare must be protected. And so looking at this, the unnecessary hardship is defined in the subregs as a multi-part definition. It's a condition resulting from the application of regulations when viewing the property in its environment that is so unreasonable as to become an arbitrary and capricious interference with the basic right of property ownership, or convincing proof exists that it's impossible to use the property for a conforming use, or sufficient factors exist to constitute a hardship that would in effect deprive the owner of their property without compensation. And so this variance has been reviewed under the first option, that it is a requirement that is so unreasonable as to become an arbitrary and capricious interference with property ownership. This is the subject property outlined in black. It's bounded on the north by North 1800 Road, or what's commonly called Farmer's Turnpike. That's I-70 on the south. There are no other platted properties in the area except for the platted subdivision to the southeast, and this was platted in 1998, at which time there were no master street tree plan requirements. This area is pretty heavily wooded, but there are no street trees. There are no street trees on North 1800 in this area, and requiring that the street trees be planted here would be incorporating an urban or suburban component into this area. And one of the principles we look at is trying to maintain the rural character. In addition, this property will probably be replatted before it's annexed into the city. There may be changes to the street right-of-way, to the layout, and so it's possible that any street trees might need to be revised or removed. And so based on that, the change would seem to be an unnecessary hardship, as it would not be maintaining... As in the city, we try to maintain a uniform streetscape of street trees. Here we'd be adding an unusual element to the streetscape, so we would see that as an unnecessary hardship for the subdivider. As far as the purpose of the subdivision regulations, those are listed in 1101A, to provide for the harmonious and orderly development of land and to coordinate the development of each parcel of land with the existing community. And so having these street trees before the area is urbanized or even suburbanized would not be coordinating it with the community. And then the third requirement at the bottom, to protect the public's safety, health, and welfare. Postponing the street trees until the property is further subdivided would not affect the public's safety, health, or welfare. And so staff is recommending approval of that variance. This graphic shows a sub... Or the proposed lot. It's about 18 acres. About one acre is being dedicated as right-of-way. And then the subdivision regulations have criteria we look at when we review plats. One, the lot has to have direct access to a public road, and this will have direct access to North 1800 Road. It does meet the dimensional standards of the LI district. It meets the subdivision design standards. There is a condition related to that. One of the standards is that if you have environmentally sensitive lands, they'll be placed in easements. And so there is a wetland in the southeast corner that the applicant has placed in an easement, and through the review, I did not track on the standard matured trees just to the west of that, or they would have been added with this easement. So one of the conditions is that easement will be expanded to the west to include that standard matured trees. It is in compliance with the comprehensive plan and the area plan. The K-10 and Farmer's Turnpike Plan recommends industrial uses for this area. It has no other recommendations related to lot layout. The major thoroughfares map, the connecting streets, they're not really applicable here. There are no new streets being created with this lot. There are no master plants for water, sewer, or drainage in this area, and the plat will conform with the Kansas standards for surveys. The county surveyor will review this plat, and he'll review the final plat, and the final plat will require his signature to signify that it does comply with those standards. Some of the other items we look at are in utilities and infrastructure. One is fire protection measures. When we plat land in the unincorporated area, you have one of two options. One is, if you have enough water pressure in the rural water district to do a fire hydrant, you're required to have a fire hydrant. If you don't have adequate fire or water pressure, you would do a dry hydrant attached to a pond or other option, whatever the fire chief would recommend. The water district indicated they do not have the pressure for a fire hydrant, and the applicant has been working with the fire chief. However, he noted that until he sees the building plans and knows what kind of building materials, you know, how it's going to be constructed, he can't really come up with the fire protection measures. And so there is a condition that's being recommended, that the final plat would require either, if he was able to make his determination on fire protection measures, that they would be listed on the fire plat... Final plat, or the final plat would contain a note that the fire chief has deferred that to the site planning stage, and that those would have to be installed at the site planning stage, because it's just difficult for him to make that decision without enough information. Roads and access, as I mentioned, we do have access on North 1800 Road. Easements and rights-of-way. Adequate right-of-way is currently in place for North 1800 Road, but it is being dedicated with this plat. And then I mentioned the easements. There's an easement crossing the property, which is 150-foot-wide electrical transmission line easement, and then the environmentally sensitive land easement. There usually aren't utility easements in the rural plats, because the water district often is in the right-of-way, and if they need to cross a property, they typically have already gotten their private easements. So we don't usually have utility easements to deal with. The master street tree plan requirement, there is variance before you today for that, and there's a note in the public improvements that it may require an agreement not to protest the formation of a benefit district for the installation of sidewalks, but given the location of this, it's in Tier 3, is not expected to annex during the lifetime of the comprehensive plan, we didn't feel that that agreement would be necessary. And so these are those conditions. I'm not going to read this. It's in the staff report, but it just shows you the two options. Either the fire protection measures will be noted on the plat and installed with the site plan, or it will note that the fire chief has deferred that to the site planning stage. The plat would need to be revised. One is to expand that easement to include the standard matured trees, and then the other one is just a note documenting the access restriction agreement, so it's clear that this property is utilizing the permitted access point. And so staff does recommend approval of the variance, and staff does also recommend approval of the preliminary plat. So I'll be happy to answer questions if you have any for me, but the applicant is also present here today.
Thank you, Mary. Does the applicant want to present to the board 10 minutes for the applicant?
I won't keep you for 10 minutes, but I'm David Hamby with BG Consultants, representing the applicant. Appreciate Mary's work on this. I don't really have a whole lot to add other than to say that we've been in contact with the Rural Water District 6 and the fire chief, trying to just work through that process. The Rural Water District 6 has to have a study done, and so there's a lot there that will resolve it before the site plan's approved, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. If we have questions, we'll come back.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item? Anyone in the room? No one in the room. Anyone online, Becky?
No, not seeing anyone.
All right, so no public comment. We'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Any questions or discussions on this?
Just to clarify, if we approve the variance on the street tree master plan, that runs with the land, correct? That will stay with it until it's removed?
It would run with the plat, so when it gets replatted in the future, it would need to be a new variance.
Ah, okay. Okay, very good. Thank you.
I have a question, just about the plat. I'm trying to figure out the process in my head. The process for a plat, it comes to the planning commission, but this is something that there's really not much discretion on. Is that correct? We've been seeing some plats lately, and I'm just trying to keep them straight into my head, what our duty is.
So plats are a ministerial function, so if the document meets all the requirements, then you're obligated to approve the plat, effectively. It's not like a rezoning or a special use permit, which has different criteria, the golden factors involved there. So it's really a matter of if it meets... If it ticks all the boxes, then it would be an approval on the item.
And then the variance would have more discretion and a different standard?
Correct.
And we have two matters before us. We'll take two motions, right?
Correct. And that's why usually when you see something like this, the variance comes first, because without it, then you wouldn't be able to tick all the boxes for the second part, which is the ministerial function of the plat.
Thank you. Any other discussion, or would anyone like to propose a motion? We'll need two, one on the variance and one on the preliminary plat. We'll need to start with the variance.
I could make a motion on the variance. Let's see if I can get this right. Recommend approval of the variance requested from Section 11-1111G subdivision regulations county code, allowing the property to be platted without the provision of a master street plan as presented by staff.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? I think I guess I would just say for the record that it would seem to me that this variance makes absolute sense in the sense of the way that Mary presented it, but I recognize that there is a standard, and I think that we... I think it meets that, so.
Yeah.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Entertain a second motion on the preliminary plat.
This one's hard.
Just as a point of order there, we didn't catch Commissioner Wilson's vote on that one. I didn't know if he was abstaining.
Did you catch Commissioner Baroto's?
I did catch Commissioner Baroto. Just wanted to make sure Commissioner Wilson was voting in the affirmative there.
Yes, I'm voting in the affirmative.
Thank you.
Let me try.
Yes.
I recommend, make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Bennett's first subdivision based on the findings presented in the body of the staff report and subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report. Is that enough?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a second?
No, second.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Did we collect everyone? All right, motion passes. All right, I thought we will move on to our second item, which is considering approving a request to rezone. Mary Miller, again.
Mary Miller, city-county planner, and this is a rezoning request for property in the unincorporated portion of the county. The request is to rezone about 20 acres from Ag 1 to Ag 2. The property is located in the northwest portion of the county, as shown in the first graphic. It's shown more specifically in the aerial. It is about two miles east of Big Springs Quarry. It is southeast of Big Springs Community. You'll see the top arrow, and it's just northwest of Stoll. You'll see the bottom arrow. It's in the southeast corner of the intersection of East 1700 Road or East 200 Road, which is also county route 1025, and North 1700 Road. Some key points for this rezoning: The property is not within the urban growth area or the planning area of any city. The applicant lives on the subject property and is requesting rezoning to accommodate a land division. Current Ag 1 zoning requires a minimum of 20 acres to divide. The Ag 2 district requires a minimum of 10 acres per parcel, but you have to have 20 acres in order to do a land division. acres in order to do a land division. If the property is rezoned, the land would be divided into two, approximately 10-acre parcels, to accommodate the development of an additional residence, and this would be done through the certificate of survey process. This is a close-up of the subject property. It contains a residence, some farmland, and some wooded area. This is rezoning review criteria that we'll use. I'll go through these in this presentation. First, we look at, is the zoning and land use compatible with zoning and land uses of the nearby area? The area is zoned for agricultural uses. We have both Ag 1, the majority of the area, and Ag 2, with the difference being the sizes of the parcels. The land development, you can see in the figure on the right, is primarily agriculture and woodland, or trees, open space, and then residential. The red dots show where existing residences are located, and the yellow dot is where the proposed residence is being proposed. And then the yellow dashed line shows generally how the property would be divided. The proposed zoning and land use would be compatible with the zoning and land uses in the nearby area. We also look at, would it be compatible with the character of the area? Looking at the character of the area, we typically try to look at about a mile from the subject property, and that's the graphic on the left. It's the aerial. We can see where the residences are. I tried to mark them from the GIS aerial. It's always possible to miss some, but I think these are the residences in the area. Where they're clustered, that's identified with blue highlighting. So we do have clusters of residential development. We have agricultural land, and we have wooded area. The contour map to the right shows the topography of the area. There's quite a bit of change in the area where it's red, those are the lower elevations, and where it's bright yellow, those are the highest elevations. There's stream corridors, or, these are just like gullies, drainage areas to cut through this area. And those are difficult to farm, and they kind of match up where some of the land is not being farmed. The figure on the bottom right shows the prime farmland in the area, and the not prime farmland. We have, the red is not prime, the green is prime, and the blue is statewide importance. And so you can see, that's pretty well, it matches also the contours of the area. So the character of the area is basically agriculture, open space, and residential. And this rezoning and land use would be compatible. It would maintain the character of the area. The residence is being proposed between two clusters of residences, so it would not be encroaching or expanding residential areas into agricultural areas. And then we look at the compliance with the comprehensive plan. So Chapter 2, Natural Resources. Goal 2 tells us, recommends we manage land resources to maintain their natural functions and ensure their sustainability for the future. And Action Step 2.7 recommends we protect high-quality agricultural soils as identified in each specific land use as the community develops. And of course, we would have to do that at this stage as well. In this graphic to the right, the orange area is Class 2. Comprehensive plan identifies Class 1 and Class 2 as high-quality soils. The yellow areas are Class 3, those are not high-quality per the comprehensive plan. And so this area would be, need to be protected. It's currently not protected in the Ag 1 zoning, and it has a residence and a drive on it. If it was divided, if the rezoning is approved, and it was divided through a certificate of survey, this area would be protected. It would be kept out of the building envelope. Environmentally sensitive lands are kept out of the building envelope, up to, the maximum we can require is 40% of a site. So it doesn't, the land division itself has a protection measure for these kind of attributes. And then Action Step 2.8, to protect contiguous amounts of agricultural land in rural areas for continued productive future use. And contiguous, as noted in the staff report, is defined as having a common boundary or touching. The agricultural land on the subject property is actually contiguous to no other agricultural land, but there is agricultural land to the south in close proximity. Most of the contiguous area is in woodland or trees, and is not currently being farmed. And it's probably because of that topography we looked at in the earlier slide, that it's just difficult to farm with that kind of topography. So it would not be impacting a contiguous area of agricultural land. And then the Growth and Development section has Goal 1, to protect and preserve rural character. Actions Item 1.4, minimize agricultural land conversion to other non-agricultural uses. And Action Step 1.6, maintain working lands and high-quality agricultural soils for future generations. And Action Item 1.4, it does recommend we minimize the conversion, but not necessarily that we prohibit it. And so staff always looks at what we would call, either developing on really low productive agricultural land, or doing what we would consider rural infill, like keeping your residences where other residences are, and not expanding them out into what is currently larger agricultural areas. The next one, about maintaining working lands and high-quality agricultural soils for future generations. As I noted, if this zoning is approved, and it is divided through a certificate of survey, the high-quality soils would be protected by being placed outside the building envelope. And whether we would be maintaining working lands is difficult to know. It's only a 9.6-acre agricultural field now, and sometimes it's difficult to get a tenant farmer interested in such a small acreage. Once it's divided in half, it'd be about five acres each. And it's possible that a property owner could decide to farm that themselves with some niche farming, some organic farming, or they may find a tenant farmer that's interested. It's just impossible for us to know. So there is a possibility that it, we don't know if it'd be maintaining working lands either way. And then another, in Section B, residential, the goal is to provide housing opportunities while conserving the overall rural character, and to minimize non-agricultural residential development. And again, we look at that, what we term rural infill. Placing a home in this location just continues that clustered area, and it doesn't really bring new land outside of the agricultural area. So overall, the rezoning request is in conformance with the recommendations in the comprehensive plan. It's just not clear whether or not the agricultural uses could be maintained, once they're reduced from the nine acres down to about the five acres. So other factors that we look at is, what is the suitability of the property to use as it's currently restricted in the Ag 1 district? With the Ag 1 district and the Ag 2 district, the permitted uses that are allowed by right are basically identical. The Ag 1 is a little more liberal. They allow certain types of home occupations, where Ag 2 would require a CUP, but otherwise there's no difference in uses. Some of the conditional use permits are different, and those all have to go through a process similar to a rezoning. So they're very similar, there's really no change in uses. The change is in the parcel size that's possible. There are no area plans adopted out in this part of the county. The property is not vacant as zoned, it is developed with residence. The intention is to develop it further with another residence. What, how would the rezoning detrimentally affect nearby property? As I noted, it's adjacent to a county route on the west, north to east 200 Road, and that's where the new parcel would take access. And so this higher classification roadway would be able to accommodate the additional traffic from one residence. So there should be no detrimental effect. And then the gain to the public safety and health if the rezoning is denied versus the hardship to the applicant? Well, as there are no detrimental impacts, there's no gain identified with the denial of the rezoning. The hardship to the applicant would be that they would not be able to pursue their plans to divide their property. And so again, these are the rezoning review criteria we look at. In staff's opinion, they have been met. And so staff recommends that the planning commission approves rezoning and forward it to the planning commission with a recommendation for approval. So I'll be happy to answer questions if you have any for me, and the applicant is present as well.
Thank you, Mary. Appreciate your presentation. Last questions if we have any later. Is the applicant like to approach? There'll be 10 minutes for the applicant.
My name's Terry Martin, I'm the property owner. It's listed there. So first, I guess, there's one, now there's one public comment against it. Do I wait on to comment on that, or do, sorry, I'm not familiar with the format.
That's quite all right. No, you have 10 minutes to let us know anything you'd like, and you can, if you'd like, comment on the public comment that was provided in the package, in the public packet this afternoon. I think there was one public comment, and I do think it was, again, that you're welcome to talk about that now. You also have 10 minutes right now to talk about anything you'd like us to know.
Okay, I'll address that as well, but first of all, I appreciate your time. I really want to thank Ms. Miller and her staff. She's been very helpful in answering my questions and explaining the process, and happy retirement to you. So I appreciate the opportunity to provide a little bit of background, especially with the one that's opposed to it. So what my neighbor who provided the feedback probably doesn't know is, 13 years ago, when I moved my family out to the country, you know, we're not farmers. So I wanted to move my children out to the country. In the first year, I couldn't find somebody to farm it. In the second year, I found Lone Pine, who reluctantly agreed to farm it, and they farmed it for about four years, and then gave it up due to low yields, and it's a very small parcel. And then I found Mr. Bruce Johanning, he was a neighbor. Mr. Johanning retired last year, and so that's the real reason it's not being farmed any longer. It's not cost-effective for me to farm it, and due to it's being a small parcel, no one's really interested, they want to travel very far to farm it. In terms of selling, buyers are not interested in farm ground with the house. I know that, because they have expressed that through feedback when we've had showings. And furthermore, my wife and I had no intention of moving. Listen, we've been here 13 years, we've raised our five children here. I'm originally from Baldwin, I'm a graduate of Baker University, I'm a longtime resident. So we had no intention of moving. However, due to significant deaths in my family last year, we're moving to take care of some other family members. So that's the reason we're moving. So I'll be happy to answer any questions, but again, thank you, and thank you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you. Is there anyone here, we'll move to public comment, is there anyone here to comment on this item for this evening? Anyone online? Becky?
No, no one online.
All right. With that, we will bring it back to the commission for discussion. Questions, discussion?
So you're selling the residence that is there, and you'd like to sell the residence in 10 acres, and lop off that other 10 acres?
Yes, sir.
I will say, I went out and looked and drove around out there, and know that area. Philosophically, I'm opposed to our chopping Ag 1, 20 acres, up into Ag 2. I looked at that area, and it kind of tweaked my opposition to 20 acres after I saw where it was and what's around it, because on east down the road, there is nothing until you get to Henry's Plant Farm, isn't that correct?
Well, directly east, correct, sir. There's nothing, but farther down, there are houses on both sides of the property.
Yeah, a lot of timber on the, both sides of the road.
Directly east of us is pretty much all timber.
It is, it is hard for me to... It's hard for me to want to divide this when specifically 20 acres, without rezoning, because specifically 20 acres is the minimum lot size in Ag 1.
Well, it's my understanding, and Ms. Miller can correct me on this if I'm wrong, but it used to be five, and you know, and then some time ago, it was changed to 10, so...
Commissioner Thomas, I need to ask you if you are asking a question of the applicant or not, only because public comment and application's closed, I just want to make sure you're asking a direct question of...
Yeah, that was about selling the house and selling the other property, is what you want to do. I didn't know you were going to sell the other property. I didn't note that, I guess, that that was in there.
Well, I mean, I don't want to sell, we don't want to move, but...
There other questions or discussion on this property?
I don't have any questions of the applicant. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I really have a question more for Mary Miller. I appreciated your report very much, and for me, it put me exactly in an uncomfortable place because of Plan 2040. I think there is an overwhelming goal in 2040 to preserve the rural character of our county. And yet, I think we have been piecemealing that. And I don't know how or where you stop piecemealing, because if we continue to do it, there won't be any rural character left to preserve. And yet, I certainly understand why an individual with 20 acres would rather divide it up and maximize the profits, particularly as they're moving on to somewhere else. There's nothing wrong with that as a desire to do. I think our job is to look at the controlling planning items, and that's 2040, and balancing it. And I think, Mary, you have just done an incredible job of balancing it. And I think I can understand how you came out the way you did, but I could also understand if you had come out in denial, because I think that's close a call. And that, me, makes my part of our job very painful.
Yeah.
But on balance, I think our job is to look at the community, the entire county, rather than the individual need. And on that basis, I end up opposed to this. Not because it's a bad idea, not because it's fair, but because I think that on balance, if we're really serious about preserving our rural character, we've got to do it piece by piece.
I can agree with your sentiment and with the ideals of protecting rural ag ground by not chopping it up, and that's why we put the rules in place that we did. And we've said no in other cases where, notably, I can remember one clearly, where there was a desire to build more on a piece of ground. But the thing that I think pushes me to approve here, to be in favor of this, is Figure 5. And that's talking about the character of the area, and not taking anything away from what's in 2040, although, because it's positive notes cited from 2040, in support of a favorable approval on this. But 2040 also cautions us to be careful about that. But in Figure 5, I look at that, and it specifically shows, I don't know if you could put that up, if that'd be possible, but it's the one-mile view of the area, just one mile, and the number of residences that are already there. And if I go just right into that little center area, there are six already right there. I'm not sure what we're preserving by saying no to this. It doesn't preclude that that farm ground that's now nine acres, and now soon be four and a half on each side, couldn't be treated as a whole. It doesn't say that it won't, likely it won't, I don't, I'm not going to guess that. Everything else is wooded to the east of that. It's unfarmable, or at least unfarmed mostly to the west of it. I just don't know what we'd be preserving. I don't feel like we're preserving the rural character by doing that. And I want to hold the right, in future cases, to be able to say no if, as I look at that and just one person's opinion, I think, okay, well, no, that really does serve to segment rural ground in ways that are detrimental. But for me, I'll stop rambling, but for me, as I look at that graphic, that's the thing that pushes me to say, you know what, in this case, I think it's appropriate.
I concur.
Commissioner? I would just say to Commissioner Rexro that I appreciate that, there are wonderful graphics in here, I think. However, the history of this property has been farmed, and that the person who was farming it has retired. It's not that it's unfarmable. So I think if we say no, what we're preserving is that opportunity to continue to farm, not by this owner, perhaps, of someone else.
The rezoning, though, doesn't preclude farming.
Essentially, it does, once you get it. In my... Essentially, it does once you get it. In my view, it does once you get it split up and you build two houses on it. I think, I think that then you are done.
Did I understand, Mary, thank you, Jane, did I understand, Mary, when you were talking about how that farm ground was to be protected, that that building would not occur on?
Right. The environmentally sensitive lands, so like Class II soils and prime farmland would be kept outside of the building envelope, so they cannot build on it.
So that risk, that concern is, in my view, is mitigated by what Mary just described.
I'm not a farmer, but I understand that there are prime soils and there would be adjoining non-prime soils. And I don't know. But I think that the little bit of farming I was involved in as a child, we used soils that were really good and you, stuff really grew like heck there. And adjoining them were soils that weren't so good. But altogether, that's how we got all our.
Yeah.
Can I ask the applicant what is being, what was being farmed, when it was farmed?
Row crops, you know, they'd alternate between soybeans and corn.
Okay.
But.
On 10 acres?
Not yet. Less than 10 acres, 9.6. But I will tell you, ma'am, that.
I'm sorry, you have to only address the question that's been asked.
I'm sorry.
But she may, other commissioners may have more questions for you, so.
So I can't provide any further comment?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I would, I absolutely see the wonderfully intelligent commissioners on either side of me and their point on this, and being a rural person as well, to need to protect. But I also understand exactly what Commissioner Rexrode's saying. When you get down to four acres or eight acres from each of 10 plots anyway, to one in today's society where it takes, today's farming society, where it takes dozens or hundreds of acres to become even, where you might break even, you're not going to find somebody to do row crops on that small amount of land. So now you're down to maybe you grow, you can grow hay. But, and then the value of hay literally is dependent on where the drought is in the country at any given time. So, and based on what is around the rest of this property, I'm in support of it. But I absolutely, it's a fine edge as to which side I fall on.
And I think to your point, actually, about the farmland, if you think about even at right now, just under 10 acres, it would be dry crop, or dry row crop land, not irrigated, right? You're not going to irrigate this 10 acres. And so either way, the farmer that would choose to do this would be taking a huge risk or be paying a lot in insurance to mitigate said risk in the future if the crop were to fail. And, you know, if any of you have lived in Kansas long enough, we know that it can change overnight, right? Whether the crop is worthwhile or whether it's not. And just what it would take in diesel to drive there and try to plant and do all of this and get back home, I don't see this being, I mean, our family stopped farming anything under 50 acres. Like, it just wasn't cost effective for us. So.
Having, so the Johannings don't do it now, and Lone Pine is not doing it now. They don't, for reasons, they retired. But when you have two families live on that, on 10 acres, it, more true, Commissioner Rexrode, that you can find positives in there. I wish we had seen negatives in there as well that said, here's why not to do it. Because there are those in there as well. And I will have a hard time, even though I can appreciate the landowner coming here and saying, here's what's going on. We've raised five kids here. We've been here for 13 years. We've been in the Baldwin area. We moved here. It was our lifelong residence. Things have changed. I don't know that there are no other possibilities for individuals buying that 20 acres. But that's what we would have to presume, that everything has been done that can possibly be done to get an individual to do the 20 acres in one house. I won't say 20 acres are sacrosanct, because we have certainly taken some out in the past. Just to the west is all Ag 1. The land right across the road is all Ag 1. And that is a huge expanse over there.
Not nearly as wooded.
Oh, no.
Much, much more farmable.
Oh, it is. Oh, goodness, yes. I don't know when the other houses were built, but I'm guessing long before we had the comprehensive plan that we have today. And the individuals who wrote the comprehensive plan that we have have said how important it is to keep 20 acres viable. And a tough, tough decision. It just, having two, having two residences, I'm telling you, the farmland is gone. You're not going to find anybody. When the Johannings won't, and Lone Pine can't, you're not going to find many that are going to come in and say, well, now, yeah, I'll try and work with two property owners and make something happen. It's, I would say it is gone.
Does it change anything for you, Charlie, that instead of it being 20 acres of farm ground, that it's 9.6 acres of farm ground?
No, not really. Because it's spread over that area. So, no, it doesn't really.
I would have to say I'm inclined to agree with Commissioners Thomas and Eldridge. I am struggling with this. It's understandable. I think you're right that it's right to want to both outcomes. Like, another one is, is a wrong outcome. But in light of the county's regulations and the, like, we purposely have it, these regulations, because we're trying to preserve the prime farmlands and contiguous farmlands and the rural character of the neighborhood. And the more and more we divide all of these up, the more difficult it is to, I think, fulfill that community value. In addition to that, while I look at that map, and there's houses scattered about, I think one thing I really struggle with is that as we, as we do that about two and a half years, I think I've been on the planning commission now. And what I, what I see is, it's like, oh, well, there's some houses here, so let's build one here. And then there's, oh, well, there's a house here, let's build one here. And then, and so like, I think, yes, it's important to look at the character of the neighborhood, but not just how many houses are there, but also like, how many acres without houses on there are there in this, in this area. And I just, I feel like we're piecemealing. And the regulation for the Ag 1, not dividing less than 20, was to try to avoid, not prohibit, but avoid the piecemealing. And I'm just inclined not to support it for that reason, although I completely understand why the request is being made. So that's just where I'm at. I'm not saying the discussion is done, but that's kind of where I'm at.
Yeah, I'll offer it. I appreciate all the good sentiments shared tonight, good arguments and considerations on both ends. Personally, I think I align with Commissioner Rexrode in supporting this application. As he, I think cogently stated, this is a small parcel being made into two smaller parcels. And with that, there's not that dramatic of an impact for this particular area. I would potentially have a different view if we were looking at a much larger parcel being whittled down. But in my mind, this has already been whittled, and we're just approving one additional motion on it. So that's where I'm at.
Any of the commissioners online? Any comments? They don't want to exclude you. Okay, great. Any further discussion or I'll entertain a motion? Oh, yes. Commissioner Baroto?
Yes. Well, my opinion is that I agree with his obligation and with Commissioner Rexrode and Commissioner Munch. I don't see a huge impact on dividing this land. And based on what the applicant nation, I'm getting on a bunch of these in search, I'm going to assume that this property is currently listed for sale. And it seems like there's not many farmers out there interested in the place that Teddy moves the, with land available for farming. So, and with the other images here that I'm looking at, specifically the image number four, and figure, the figure number three, there are other houses already that are, and lanes are zoning, the Act 2. So I don't see a, I don't see a big issue based as them being divided. So that, without, I would support this action.
Thank you.
I'd offer a motion if you're ready. See where it goes.
All right.
I move approval of Z-25-0008, the request to rezone approximately 20.27 acres at 2005 North 1700 Road from Ag 1 to Ag 2, based on the findings presented in the staff report and forwarding to the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation for approval.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 All those against? All right. It looks like the motion passes. Thank you. It's approved. Thank you for coming this evening and good luck.
Thank you.
And now, I believe that we have concluded our action items, and we will move on to miscellaneous items for the commission. I'm not sure I want to move on to this item.
I'm not sure I would like to move on to this item myself. However, I think Mary would like us to move on to this item.
Okay, that's fair. For Mary's sake, we'll move on to this item then. But Mary, it's with reluctance.
I think it's probably the worst kept secret at this point in the room at this, at this stage. But this will be Mary's last planning commission with us, and she's retiring.
Wow.
So I can't say enough about Mary and all the years I've worked with her. She's taught me how to read the county zoning code. She put up with me through the 8,000 questions I had about pod days and plating and certificates of survey, and then rehashing certificates of survey when I forgot. And then doing it a third time after I had a week in between the last time I asked her to kind of go through it. But it's with great energy that we're sending her out with that one. But I wanted you all to know is that we will miss her. And I know that she's been before you countless many hours. And so unfortunate, but we're glad to see Mary go off into a great retirement.
Mary, congratulations from all of us. But I mean, I, all of my dumb questions, I'm sure other people, for many decades, you had to answer all of our questions. But you did it with such grace and clarity and educated all of us up here so much. So all I can say is thank you very, very much.
You are an institution here. Boy, you're going to be missed for sure. I'm sorry, I'm sorry to see you go, but I want to welcome you to the glorious land of retirement. Because it is great.
I just have to figure out how I'm going to purge this zoning information out of my head. It's not going to be very useful.
You might be able to go on vacation and see something other than everybody's zoning problems.
That's true.
Probably about 15 minutes afterwards, Mary would be like, delete, don't need any of that information.
Commissioner Eldridge?
Mary, I think I may have known you the longest of anyone who's up here. And I think maybe you even came when I was still practicing law.
Yes.
I've had the privilege of representing applicants, working with Mary, representing neighborhood associations who are opposed to something Mary's been working on, being a neighbor that was opposed to something Mary was working on, and now being a planning commissioner. And the overwhelming thing in all those opportunities I've had to work with Mary has been her neutrality, her integrity, and her commitment to all of the details, to understanding every bit of it. And every time I'd go back to her and say, yeah, but what about this? What about that? She was always gracious. And she sometimes agreed with me. But she always considered what I had to say. And I can't tell you how much I value that. That has been terrific. And I'm going to miss you very much.
Thanks. I'm going to miss you guys. You know, a lot of memories being here and being so scared. You know, it's always so nervous getting up there. And I'm always afraid when you ask your questions, like, what are they going to ask? You know, but...
You would never know it from sitting up here.
You guys, a lot of times ask questions like, I should have thought of that, you know? And so I'm going to miss you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
You've done a great job.
Do you know what you're going to do?
Well, I know for at least six months, I'm going to enjoy myself, and then I'm going to figure out my budget. So, because I can't figure it out conceptually until actually I'm in it. And then I'll probably have to do something. But for six months, I'm just going to have fun.
There you go. Love that.
That's terrific.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mary. With that, I'll entertain a motion to recess? Or do I have to have a motion or just recess without a motion? Oh, yes, there's additional.
I have a question. Have we resolved anything about an orientation?
Oh, I'm sorry. That was my fault. On miscellaneous business, we did have orientation. I just got so excited about Mary's celebration.
I have heard from a little over half, Commissioner Thomas, after the meeting, I'm going to come chat with you. But I sent out a doodle poll. I'm going to resend that for individuals maybe who might have missed it the first time out. But I did have a question. It's kind of looking like Fridays, there's not just a real winner for everyone on a Friday date for a fall orientation. So was kind of curious if perhaps Fridays are not the best day? Would it be a better option for me to be looking for something outside of Fridays?
Does Friday exclude anyone? Does Friday exclude anyone?
The only day that's bad for me are Thursdays.
Me too.
Because I'm always booked on Thursdays. Fridays work for me. I will tell you, I am learning the joys of disconnecting from the internet and the freedom there is from, say, gone.
Amen.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, but I still need you to respond to the orientation poll.
It's in the carrier pigeon.
What I, I think I'll do tomorrow, I'll work on expanding that poll. And we may need to creep into a little bit later into the, closer to the end of the year. So I'll throw on some more dates. So if you've already answered it, just be on the lookout, because there'll be some more dates for you. And if you haven't answered it, then be on the lookout for that general survey.
Is the trouble trying to find a full day that works for all the working people to be able to get away? Would it be helpful to break it into like, two half days? Would that be easier for the time clock punchers up here?
No.
Rub it in.
That was fun.
You've got a lot of mileage this, out of this meeting.
For those who travel to Lincoln, Nebraska. Yeah. But I'll joke aside, would it be easier for folks that are?
No.
Okay. I think people would rather just do one day, knock it out, so that they don't have to take off parts, two parts a day. Okay. Yes, online. Commissioner Wilson?
A second here. Yep. Fridays are fine. There's not a day necessarily, a better day of the week. For me, sometimes travel involves Fridays. But I'm good with that day, day of the week.
Okay, great. Thank you. We will do a more poll. We'll figure it out. We may end up talking to see if there's some kind of electronic situation we can make happen if people can attend, just can't physically get here or something. So we'll continue to try to find a time. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. And with that, we're in recess. I don't need a motion, do I?
Typically, you.
Oh, I do. I need a motion for recess.
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
We're recessed.
We're recessed until Wednesday.